Good evening, welcome to the December meeting of the Lake Mills Board of Education. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Could we stand and do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I'll call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Dawn Delaney.
Here.
Rachel Davies.
Here.
Robert Imperio.
Here.
Donna Thomas.
Here.
Richard Mason.
Here.
Chase Shield.
Here.
Verification of meeting notice.
Yes, it was in the paper and on the website.
Any agenda revisions?
I have none.
Move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second.
Move to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same side. All right, that carries unanimously, committee input.
I had Ms. Morris, I know, wanted to speak. She was the only one I had signed up.
All right. Where are these other two?
Hi, this is Deb Galstad and Joanne Russo from the elementary school. I'm Brenda Morris, I teach English at the high school, speaking on behalf of the Lake Mills Education Association tonight, and we would like to thank the board for administering the compensation survey and for your commitment to getting teacher input on the new compensation schedule. We think it's really great that we had 100 percent participation in the survey, and Bob Butler of the WASB said this level of participation is unprecedented, so we're pretty excited about it, and we can see that this issue is very important to our staff, and we just really appreciate that you're listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for the input, 100 percent is really great.
Yes.
We appreciate that. Consent agenda, minutes of the November 9th and regular meeting and December 2nd special meeting.
I'll move to approval, the approval of the minutes of the November 9th, 2015 regular meeting and the December 2nd, 2015 special meeting.
Second.
Student seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, that passes unanimously, vouchers and invoices.
The treasurer's report. Good evening. What I sent out earlier this past, or later this past week was kind of a format of when I was going to go by, and I certainly look forward to discussing this further in our finance meetings, as I hope to resume them this next month. Obviously if there's things you want to see extra, anything, I'm going to have some comments along with it usually. This being the first attempt at it, I want to make sure I could get some feedback and go from there, so. I didn't want to spend too much time talking about too much because we have a lot to go on with the auditors tonight, so I kind of want to keep it short and brief, and just continuing to work with Tim on getting the audit back into financial shape and we'll move forward with the audit.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $991,224.52 for the month of November 2015 and the treasurer's report for July, August, September, October, and November 2015.
Second.
Student seconded, any discussion, comments?
I would just say probably through September, if you're going to make it accurate, through September 30th. That's as far as I've got with the [inaudible].
Okay.
So, I want to make sure of that.
So amend them.
Yeah.
So note, July, August, September.
Okay, do I put forth an amended motion?
No, you just have to say you will amend it, and then Dawn has to second her.
Okay, I amend it to July, August, and September of 2015.
Second.
Okay, and student seconded to amend it. Thank you for bringing it up, working your way to bringing it up to date, we appreciate that. Can we have roll call on that, please?
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Bob Imperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Okay, administrative reports, Andrew, do you have anything in addition to add to that?
No, just, I wanted to introduce Wendy and Paul whenever we get to it here, so.
Let them go, all yours. Up to microphone and.
Well, thank you for having us here this evening again. My name is Wendy Unger, I'm the Partner on the Engagement for the District. With me is Paul France, he is the Senior Manager on the Engagement and spent a lot of the infield time doing the audit work. What we've provided you this evening is a handout, which is a high-level summary of the two other documents that you should have received prior to this evening. We'll go through this document at a very high level. If you do have any questions, please feel free to ask those, we'll be happy to address those as we go through. We've also included on the very last page our contact information, so if there are any questions or follow-up discussions you'd like to have, please feel free to reach out to either one of us. In the handout, I'm going to cover the first couple pages, turn it over to Paul, and then I'll wrap it up at the end. We're going to talk very briefly about the audit results, go through some very high-level summary financial information. We've included a couple other bullet points that we think are important to note regarding the district, and as I noted again, any questions you have, please feel free to ask. On page three, this is where we've highlighted the audit results. The objective of the audit for the district was to express an opinion on the financial statements. We've done that, we've issued a clean, unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can obtain from your auditors. And what does that mean? It means that the financial information that's contained within your audited statements is believed to be materially accurate, that all the disclosures that are required under our standards, all the disclosures that are required to be included under our standards have been, and that generally accepted accounting principles have been adhered to. There was a new GASB, a Governmental Accounting Standards Board statement effective for the district as of June 30th, and towards the end of the presentation, I'll explain to you what that means, but you will note in your opinion, the pages within your financial statement, an emphasis of matters paragraph that states that there was a new accounting principle introduced during the year. So, again, we'll touch base in a moment on what that means for the district. Page four, I'm going to turn it over to Paul, he's going to do pages four, five, and six, and then I will come back direct up.
Very good, thank you. Again, my name is Paul France, both Wendy and I are from the Milwaukee office, and during the course of the audit, we worked with Bob Shady, Tim Stelmacor, and now Andrew, and received nothing but cooperation from the district and their support staff, and just want to express our excitement in working with the district and the challenges that were presented with the amount of turnover, but everyone pulled together and we pulled together an ultimate meeting the deadlines as we had laid out. So on page four of the handout, like Wendy had mentioned, there's been, there were three documents that you received prior to tonight, the first being the financial statement document, we're going to skip over that for the time being. The second document you received was a communication letter to, it's called a communication to those charged with governance. In that document, we lay out a number of items that were identified during the course of the audit, and we can spend a few brief moments to walk through that document. On pages two and three, we issued, or noted, two material weaknesses for the district, the first being on pages two and three, a material weakness for the internal control environment. Ultimately, what that material weakness lays out is that there are a lack of segregation of duties over the significant transaction cycles of the district. This is not unusual in nature to districts of your size, but we do, as auditors, need to bring it to your attention. In the pages two and three, we lay out some different controls that the district could consider implementing that would strengthen the process, but ultimately, it's not adding one or two bodies to the process, it's a much broader level of individuals in the department. There's just a cost benefit relationship that you have to weigh in and have, so that's what's laid out there. On page four is a material weakness related to the internal controls or financial reporting. What that material weakness lays out is that you don't have somebody currently on your staff with the ability to prepare that financial statement document, that you don't have someone specialized in the Governmental Accounting Standards Board's accounting standards, and ultimately, you've chose to outsource that to us. Again, very common for a district of your size, both of these material weaknesses, I would say, were given to 85, 90 percent of our client base, so not unusual in nature. Pages five to seven is a two-way communication that we're having with you, we are reaching out to let you know kind of what our audit plan is for next year, the timing of what that is, and letting you know that we're willing and open to hearing areas that you have concern or things that you would like us to do different. There are some questions within that portion of the letter that we ask, that you ask yourselves, and ultimately, if you determine that you'd like to have further conversation with us, our contact information is there. On pages eight through 12 are some other comments and recommendations that came up during the course of the audit that didn't raise to the level of material weakness or significant deficiency. These would be more comments around policy and procedures to evaluate. I'm not planning to go through in any detail in this section, but if there are questions, would be more than willing to answer them now or down the road as you evaluate the documents. Excuse me. The last section of that document is our required communication that we need to have with you. Ultimately, we choose to put it in written format, and here it highlights the different accounting principles, I'm sorry, in one section, it talks about the new accounting principles that were adopted during the course of the year. As Wendy mentioned, GASB 68 and 71 were implemented for the district that ultimately added some additional liabilities to the top-side financial statements, your statement of net position. That standard's been implemented and ultimately, we retroactively applied that standard, so we restated some figures in the financial statements. In addition to that section, we lay out a listing of journal entries of a material nature that we did for the district. We list out if we had any disagreements or struggles during the course of the audit, which we did not, and ultimately, on the last page, we lay out the various services that we provided for the district during the course of the year, and ultimately confirm our independence. On the bottom of, now I'm going to switch back to the, still at the bottom of page four, and we're switched to the third report that we issued, the single audit report. Ultimately, the district is required to have what's called a single audit, if you receive over $500,000 of federal money in the course of the year, you're required to have a compliance audit, and we have performed that at the federal level, and since the state of Wisconsin requires a state single audit, if there's a federal single audit, we have performed the state single audit also. So that document lays out the various federal and state grants that the district received and expended during the course of the year, and ultimately notes similar material weaknesses related to the financial statement structure of the district, but also some compliance findings noted as the course of that audit, and that detail is laid out in the back of that report. And again, if there are questions now or down the road, we'd be more than happy to answer those. Moving to slide five of our presentation then, we'll start talking about some financial highlights. On this page, we summarize the general fund results for the year. When you put together your budget in the general fund, you had budgeted $14.8 million of revenue and $14.7 million of expenditures, so you had planned to add about $54,000 of fund balance in the general fund. You had revenues, actual revenues of about $15.1 million, and expenditures of only $13.6 million, so you added about $1.48 million. Now, ultimately, there was some activity that you had budgeted for that didn't take place, the biggest chunk being contributions to your trust, your Fund 73 of $816,000. That activity did not get posted in 14 and 15, and therefore, it stands out like a sore thumb when we look at your financial results. Well, currently, that activity that you had budgeted has rolled into your fund balance, and I believe you've been discussing in 15 and 16 how to address that. So, some further things that took place in the general fund that made up the swing was you had less business grounds maintenance during the course of the year, and you were $100,000 under budget and you transferred to the Special Education Fund. So ultimately, you ended the year with $5.5 million of fund balance in the general fund, which is roughly 45 percent of your operating expenditures in that fund. We'd recommend you're somewhere between 10 and 25 percent, so you're above our recommendation in there, and still above if you factor out that $816,000, still above the 25 percent. On slide six, we summarize the remaining funds of the district. The first one there, your Special Education Fund, ultimately shows $2.1 billion of revenue and expenditures that run through, that is a fund that zeros itself out each year with the general fund transfer. Next is your Debt Service Fund, you have $893,000 of fund balance as of year-end to use for a future debt repayment. Your Capital Project Fund has $1.2 million of fund balance, and then your non-major funds are, consists of $208,000 of fund balance, and that's broken out at the bottom there between your trust fund, your food service fund, and community service fund. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wendy.
On the last page, this is again where we've highlighted four bullet points related to various items within your financial statements. I will give you a couple page numbers because these are extensive footnotes that are included within your financial statements, so if at some point you'd like to look at this in more detail, you'd have those references. But the first bullet point addresses the ability for the district to borrow, you're able to borrow up to 10 percent of your equalized value, which equates to roughly $90 million. As of the end of the school year, June 30th, 2015, you had $32.9 million of debt outstanding, so the difference between that 90 million and the 32 million is your capacity to borrow going forward, obviously not taking into account any debt payments or any new debt that might occur in the future. That can be found on page 29 in your footnotes. The next bullet, next two bullet points talk about your OPAPs and your Single Employer Defined Benefit Pension Plan. Both of those are required to be included within your footnotes, and they are required to be recorded on your top-side statements. So when I refer to your top-side statements, I'm talking about the GASB 34 statements that are on the full accrual basis, the very first pages of your financial statement booklet. They're not the way you manage your organizations, they're not based on funds, it's really taking all of your funds together, adding capital assets, recording the debt, and again, showing them on a full accrual basis. But your other post-employment benefit obligation, both of these, you are required to have actuarial studies done on a couple-year basis, and based on that actuarial study, there are figures that are included within your financial statements, so the actuary calculates an annual required contribution, so they look at the population of employees that you have, and they say, okay, based on this and the benefit you currently offer, this is what you need to contribute or set aside to help fund that liability if everything happens the way we believe it will, based on current benefits. As of the end of the year, your other post-employment benefit liability is at $1.1 million. That's found on page 43, and that is again, taking that annual required contribution less your pay-as-you-go amount, meaning the amounts you pay for current retirees, and that is the figure that currently exists. The Single Employer Defined Benefit Pension Plan, this is your stipend, this is that benefit that you offer, and that figure is at $314,000, excuse me, as of the end of the year. Both of these numbers will be relatively consistent and will increase on an annual basis unless, again, there's a significant change in the benefits that are being offered, and that would affect the calculations, also if the population of employees that participate within these benefits change, that would also modify them. The very last bullet point that I've included on here talks about the employee retirement system. This is the new GASB that Paul referred to, I referred to earlier. Paul mentioned there was a restatement that was required as part of this, and there is a footnote included in the financial statements on page 33, it details out the information. But really, what GASB 68 and 71 did was say multi-employer pension plans. So for example, in the state of Wisconsin, we have the Wisconsin Retirement System. Those plans were required to have an actuarial study done, and they were required to determine what each participant's share was of either their overfundedness or their underfundedness. Now fortunately, for Wisconsin, we were overfunded, so every participant, all the school districts, all the cities, towns, villages, anybody that participated, is recording an asset on their books on those top-side full accrual statements as of the end of the year. Your figure was 1.25 million as of June 30th, and there's probably six to eight more pages of footnotes on pages, page 34, beginning on page 34, that details out the information. But really, what does that mean? That the state of Wisconsin currently is overfunded. It is a number that can fluctuate, some years it may be an asset, some years it may be a liability, really depends on the market, market switch drives what they have. So again, that number will fluctuate annually, the state of Wisconsin is required to have an actuarial study done on an annual basis, and that information be provided to the district. So again, an asset, so a positive situation, but I did want to bring that to your attention, just a lot of, really the GASB, when they implement these standards, is looking for transparency. They want organizations to understand what's going on. In the state of Wisconsin, maybe not such a big deal, because we are in a very positive situation, but for states such as Illinois, where they're not funded or very underfunded, it would look very different and provide a whole different perspective on the current situation. So, wanted to note those items. Similar to Paul, I'd like to thank everyone, management, for their cooperation. We made it through the process, we met the deadline, I think everything went very well from, with the challenges we had, so I thank them for that. As I noted earlier, also on the very last page, my contact information, Paul's contact information, we go through this information at a very high level and very quickly, so if you do have any questions, comments, concerns, please feel free to reach out to us. This format also is a format we use with our other districts, if there's different information you would like to have, please let us know, that we're happy to provide it in any type of format that you would prefer, but started with this as our starting point for this year. So, at this point, we'd open it up to questions, if anybody has any.
I just want to ask something, did I hear you say that our fund balance is now at 5.5 million, which is about 45 percent of our budget? Okay. And have we filed the fall report yet?
Yes.
Yes.
So, this is, some of this is available on the DPI website.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any notes? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Andrew, do you have anything additional at all, or not?
Just to say that we do have a plan for, obviously, we're discussing fund balance and where we're at, and why it's so high, we do have to make that adjustment this year, so obviously, it's an inflated value, we're going to take that into account when we're looking at that, so. That's the only follow-up I had to it. And I also wanted to thank them as well, and I got to say, on a side note, I came in on the back end of this, but I got to say, this is my third different group to work with, and I think, again, not just saying it, but I think they're probably the easiest format to read that I've had, from a, from a format standpoint, from the reportings, and I really appreciate that, because I've been some, part of some really technical ones that it's very hard to understand, even from my standpoint, alone a board, so I mean, it's nice, so, thank you very much.
Mrs. Strike, log.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I just have a few notes to share with you tonight. This afternoon, our high school was fortunate to have a presentation put on by the Jefferson County Drug Tax Task Force and the Lake Mills Police Department, talking about the growing concern about heroin and opiate use, really in our community, they went through cases, actually here in Lake Mills. And the highlight of the program, I think for the students, was a mom from Jefferson talking about the death of her daughter and being in the hospital with her for her last two days as they did that. So it was very impactful. Actually, that was the word that the kids used as we were leaving, I'm like, what'd you think? Impactful, like, kids kind of left. Chase can kind of talk about it, but. And right now, the same people and another family from the Waukesha area, they're presenting right now in the auditorium, it's a two-hour community forum, and I just counted, there's like 65 people in there, which I think is a really great turnout for Lake Mills, so I wanted to thank everybody, especially Troy A. Strike for setting that up for us. Another change that we've had at the high school, we have been watching the number of students that we felt were kind of dealing with food insecurity, that's the new politically correct thing, just talk about hunger, and we were really concerned about our students, and so, very quickly, we took, we talked to Aviance, and we said, can we move up that timeline about having breakfast for our kids? And so, in about two days, we came up with a breakfast program, and it's called Second Chance Breakfast, so it's offered between First Block and Advisory, so about 9:25, and we just do a box lunch, or a box breakfast, kids just quickly go by the concession stand window, they pick up their breakfast, they have three choices, I think we're going to have four choices starting tomorrow, and we started out with 50 kids, we're already up to 65 kids, and we think that's really outstanding, and we have, we're trying to always make one of the boxes, something that kids can keep with them all day, like it does have to be refrigerated, so kids can eat it after school or whenever they're hungry, and so, we're reaching out to free and reduced kids and kids, other kids too, all kids are using the program, so it's really great, and we only hope to expand that program. And then last, before I let Chase tell you a whole bunch of fun things, but we had an excellent band and orchestra concert last week, and we invite you tomorrow night to the choir concert, which is always, if you have never been to it, it's a very moving concert during the holiday season. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Just have a few things to share tonight. Speaking of concerts, we had our third and fourth grade concert. Mr. Shanafelt, our music teacher, and all of our third and fourth grade students did such a wonderful job, we had a packed house, probably over 800 people in the audience, which was more than we were anticipating, we were set up for about 700 people, and it seemed like it was about the same amount of a crowd for our school-wide concert that we've had in the past. So it's just a testament of the importance that our families are placing on our music education and just education in general. We are also investigating the feasibility or the possibility of a garden at our school, so a group of us gathered together, about 16 people, community members, parents, and teachers, to start thinking about what might this look like for our school. We are looking at composting from our cafeteria and using some of the compost in a garden, we're looking at what curricular ties do we already have in place, like our first graders that study seeds, and looking at some wellness education to tie into a school garden. So we have four different small groups that are looking at grants, resource gathering, composting, and then just what the design of a school garden might look like. So more to come, we're going to meet again in January. And then finally, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the generosity of our staff. This month, I, there are, I'm sure many things going on that I don't even know all of the pieces of the puzzle, but we have many families who are struggling in different capacities and needing some help, and our teachers are stepping up to the plate by making meals for families, donating money for gas for a family who is traveling to Madison on a regular basis, for leukemia treatments for their four-year-old daughter. We have a teaching assistant who donated bunk beds to a family who is in need of a different situation for their children to be sleeping at night, and the list can go on and on and on of all of the wonderful things that our teachers and our staff members are doing for families the past several months, so I wanted to thank them for their generosity. And reminding families, if you're watching, if you're in need of any winter clothes, we still have a lot of winter clothes available from our winter clothing drive. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Nicholson.
I again want to reiterate all the wonderful music and concerts that have been happening over the last month. We had a band, band, choir, and orchestra concert, we filled the gym twice. The music department has really worked at the middle school on transitioning and getting the concerts in a, set up in a way that it makes sense for parents to come and not be overcrowded, so we filled the gym twice that night, and it was all wonderful. Mr. Klotz made a funny comment about how, it's kind of like the Hail Mary Pass, the Packer game was going on that night, and the Hail Mary Pass that was made was kind of like the concert, it kind of all came together right at the end, but you didn't realize all the stuff that went on in the background, it was kind of cute. We also just finished our SENSIE fundraiser, the students raised $1,500 through selling SENSIE items for field trips and those types of things, so I want to thank Mia Wolleneen for helping us organize that. We are working already on our scheduling for next year, if I haven't already mentioned that, we have kids already turned in their course selection forms so that we can start to anticipate what kind of classes we're going to have for next year, because we anticipate an increase in sections, again, at the middle school. And finally, I will be sending out a holiday video to both the board and to parents on our latest community service event, and it was actually part of the volunteer activities to help me put the video together, so please watch for that. Any questions?
Thank you. Mrs. Silver.
Good evening. In my office, we're doing lots of fun things, our typical stuff, but some new things this year is, in January, we have to put a notice of educational options on the website into our parents that I'm working on, and we're kind of comparing, this is a big talk amongst all the people in my position around the amongst all the people in my position around the state right now, about what needs to be on this and what we need to do. So we're getting ready for that, and you will see that in January. The other thing that you're gonna see, there's been some changes in open enrollment. With special education, we used to have to do cost estimates, depending on how much the cost would be, depending if the kid would come in, if we would accept them or not. This state has now gone to a flat rate of $12,000 of an open enrollment for anybody who's a special education student. So, $12,000, whether their speech, or whether they're a child who needs a one-on-one in transportation. So it's a big change compared to what we've done. So what, one of the things I'm working with Roseanne on is, how many spots, how many spaces do we have available according to the staff that we have? And there's new ways of calculating that also, so I'm trying to figure, navigate that out, but that will be coming to you guys in January for approval. That's about it. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
Mr. Sanders?
Good evening. I've got two guests that I'd like to have come to the mic to have awards, I believe, to give to the board, Mr. Robert Morris from EUA and Mr. Greg Douglas from Myron, so...
Thank you, Dean. We did want to present to you the awards that Lake Mills Elementary School has gotten recently. I'll present this one first, and then I'll let Mr. Douglas follow up with the, the big daddy, so to speak. So this is an award, it's the SE Squared, which is Sustainable Engineering Award, that's given by the U.S. Green Building Council's Wisconsin Division. It's an award for projects in Wisconsin for, for leadership and sustainability. So Lake Mills Elementary School was recognized at the highest level. There were two of the highest awards, the Award of Excellence given out for the whole state. One was Appleton International Airport, and the other was Lake Mills Elementary School. So congratulations, and again, thanks for your efforts in making this project a reality and for allowing us to work on it. It was a real privilege. So thank you very much.
Make way. Wait a second.
You gotta do a handshake.
Imagine Dennis wanting a picture.
You gotta make this more formal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is the program from the event.
Is Amelia gonna get that?
She will get him on the hand, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I'll let you talk.
Okay. This is the second one. I think Bob was right, I think we might have to build a trophy case at Lake Mills Elementary. Do we have a trophy case just for these? I'll pass around the articles so you can read. This is from Engineering News Record. So E and R, if you're an engineer or contractor, this is like Walt, the Wall Street Journal. So we've been doing this for almost 100 years, and we've had one project that was considered for an E and R award, and that was Lambo Field. And it was interesting to me, when we went down to the award ceremony, and we're looking at just the scale and the magnitude, to give you a sense, the, a lot of submissions. This is over a six-state area, and the second-place school was a 12-story school in Chicago. So I just think it's interesting that the population of most of the schools that are submitted are more than the population of the Lake Mills Area School District. So it was definitely the David and Goliath, and to see a community like Lake Mills and just the, the impact, and the power that a community can have when they're all together. The judges view that as more impactful than all the, the big guys that have hundred-million-dollar budgets plus. And our, our school almost made the small project category, but it beat all the big schools in the K-12 category, so we think this is pretty cool. We've been trying to get an award for this for a long time, so Lake Mills, congratulations.
DeMianne, come on up. Put the roses in the middle.
That would be you.
Leave the tilde back, otherwise all I get is a...
Is that good?
Otherwise, all I get is a big flash of light off of it.
A lot of glare. Pictures.
Did you powder it down?
No, it couldn't, wouldn't make any difference.
You want both of them then?
Yes.
I should point out that that award is on a door sample, so it's, the idea is recycle, reuse, be green.
Do you want to get Greg in there?
Sure. Step a little closer.
It's an architectural.
Great, thank you.
Good, thank you.
If you guys need to leave, you're more than free to do that, so, hang on, wait for Bob's report.
He has a magazine.
I appreciate you coming all the way down here, Greg and Bob.
Second thing I had was just a short discussion about summer school pay. On the back of your sheets in your packet, there was the dates for summer school, and on the back of one of them, our summer school coordinator did a survey of some of the local districts as to what they're paying and where they're at. If you remember the history of this district, it used to be that teachers were paid on an hourly rate based on what they made off of the salary schedule. So it could have been 25, 30, 35, 20, 18, you never knew. So when we did the handbook back when Act 10 came in, we went to $20 an hour. We have not raised that since 2011. And so you can also see that, you know, she's starting to have people say, "Well, you know, I can make a little bit more in Jefferson." It's not a lot, but I, I can make a little bit more doing the same thing. So as I looked at it, and I'd like to, if we do talk about it, bring it back next month for a vote, I'd like to see us move from 20 to $25. We can afford that, the budget handles it, the summer school budget handles it, but to keep our people in place and to reward them for teaching for us, and not lose good people to somebody else over three or four or five dollars an hour, would make some sense to me. So, I'd like to bring that back next month, but I guess I'm open to suggestions or what other people have to say.
I wasn't here for all of that. Is this the time, do we have to put something on the table before I can ask a question?
No.
Okay.
No.
I wasn't here for that change.
It was Dawn. It was before both of you.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm gonna take a stab in the dark, that it was budgetary that we went to $20 an hour?
It was budgetary at that time, to try to help keep summer school feasible and affordable, and we have saved money on the salaries and broke even, made a little money now, and we were kind of at that level where we were starting to lose money, and you had to decide, okay, what did you want for summer school? Did you just want remedial, were the, you know, did you want other kind of classes? And by doing this, we could bring that back. But we've also raised our numbers in summer school the last, if not, three, four years of students, so we're at a point in time that, you know, the FTE that we get off of it can afford the raise in pay.
Is there, have we looked at what it would be to go back to the old way, paying people their rate?
We couldn't afford to go back to the old way.
Okay, that was my good main question, okay.
It seems reasonable, the increase to $25.
Well, and I think it puts you right in the ballpark with everybody around you.
Yeah. Any other comments? Questions?
All right.
Okay?
I'll put that on the agenda for next month, so that you have it. Lastly, in front of you, you've got a sheet that just shows you the declaration of candidacy that was in the paper. We've got two board members, Mr. Imperio and Dr. Delaney, who are up for election in April. Both of them have stated that they're running, but if they are not, they have until the end of this month to fill out paperwork in our office on a non-declarating paperwork, otherwise you just have to file your papers by January 5th, as it says on there. Anyone else in the community who's, would like to run for that position, again, has until January 5th at 5:00 to fill out the paperwork, which can be found in our office.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sheel, welcome aboard.
So, yeah, that presentation that Ms. Strike talked about earlier was, of course, impactful and powerful from a student standpoint, and it, it really laid down some facts and valuable info, and actually, it kind of scared me a little bit because I didn't really know that it was, that kind of stuff was so close. I thought it was like way off, far away. So yeah, that, that, and update from Student Council. After a lot of stress and hard work, the senior class of 2016 have pulled off some great senior exhibitions, and they will actually be in the auditorium this year, December 22nd, and we're, they're all kind of a little devastated that they can't bring in couches now, but... Student Council is starting a food drive this week. All donations will go to the food pantry. The Ice Cream Social is coming along, and we're just trying to figure out the prizes for the raffle. Updates from the student body, a new club was started by Zoe Quinn, who is a freshman this year. It's a philosophy club, and Iron Club will be hosting Winter Formal this year. The Lift-a-thon raised over $900 to pay for that, so that, that's pretty much it.
Good, thank you. It's nice to hear you talk again.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Imperio?
The Facilities Committee, several weeks ago, had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Douglas. The purpose for the meeting was to go over the facilities report that EUA had done over the, over the summer and was reported to the board in late summer. And what we were attempting to do, and we had a general discussion about prioritizing a number of the initiatives that were identified, both to maintain the physical condition of the building, but also to look at the potential for expansion due to increases in enrollments that we currently are seeing in some of the lower grades. And so our, the, the outcome of that meeting was that a more detailed report would be made, as well as cost estimates, for some of those items. We can bring that to our January meeting and have a discussion, and then that will determine whether we move forward and include those items, or which items we'll include in our long-range planning. So, we look forward to some additional information in January, some discussion by the board to see if there's concurrence on those, on those elements.
Okay, thank you. Alternative compensation, compensation report, Dr. Delaney.
Yeah, we pulled together a team. Pam actually brought together teachers, herself, Bob, myself, from board, and Bob Butler, to look at our current teacher compensation plan, to see if we could come up with either a new plan or a way to modify what we currently have. Our first meeting was on November 11th, and we developed a survey, and the survey was sent out to all the teachers, and as was reported, there was 100% response participation. So we met again after Thanksgiving and reviewed the results. For the most part, it appeared that teachers were pretty happy with the current system, but some tweaks are in order, and, so we're looking at, we met again today, and we are going to, we took a look at existing models, some other, from some other school districts, and I think some of the points that came out is, teachers are interested in a compensation plan that's easy to follow, something that's going to be sustainable over the long term, focusing on experience and length of service. So I, we'll wait to see kind of what comes out of this, but it looks like our existing model isn't too far off base, maybe a few modifications, but we'll wait and see. So we'll be meeting again probably next month and working further.
All right, thank you, thank you. Policy report. The Policy Committee reviewed the two policies. This is the first reading of open enrollment, and what you see is a reflection of legal counsel, that we had to update these things to match the current law. This will be the first reading tonight, and then the, we'll vote on that in the January meeting.
And with that, just, I, I need you to understand that with the new law, especially under the special ed numbers that Ms. Silver spoke to earlier, this has to be approved at your January meeting, the updates, and then, if you remember, last year, there was a grid that you had to approve with numbers of how many openings we might have, and you have to approve that also at your January meeting. And if it's not done in January, you open yourself up, A, to a lawsuit, and B, you open yourself up to being, you can't say no. So if a thousand students were asked to come in, you have to take that thousand students because you didn't approve it at your January meeting. That's how tight this law has now become. So I thank Roseanne Punsle for going to a couple of legal ceremonies, ceremonies, meetings, maybe they were a ceremony, I don't know. She's the one that went through and exited out, and took it back to the next legal meeting, and had them look at it also. So a lot of work done on her part, but this has got to come back in January, along with the numbers, to be approved.
Good. We can still set our numbers, right?
Still set your numbers, as long as you do it, you know, we have, in the past, we have some numbers that, you know, 1 to 22, 1 to 25.
Right.
That stays the same, but there's a little bit of changes in the special ed, in how you have to report numbers there now, depending upon, if you, if you put your teacher into the state report as cross-categorical, you can, you can put your numbers at a certain level, meaning, I'm cross-categorical, I deal with all the students in the, in the building, I can be 1 to 15. But if you put me in as I'm an LD teacher, now my caseload might be 1 to 15, but you have to designate also what grades.
Mm-hmm.
And if you don't fit that, you can't say no to any special education students in that program in those grades. And then again, as Ms. Silver said, you understand, in the past, if that student came in with $18,000 worth of costs, you could charge that back to the other district where they came. Now, you get $12,000, and you would pay the other six out of your budget. So there's some very tricky language that you, and some steps we gotta jump through to make sure that this is legal. The lawyer who put this one together basically said at the meeting, and she was pointing at the CISA two student superintendent, she said, "One of you is going to get sued over this," because they need to make an example, and they're going to do it in this area. I don't want to be that one. So I want it done, and we need to have it done in January.
Okay. Correspondents, Dr. Delaney.
I have one. This is a thank you note from Robin Davidson. Dear Dean and the school board, thank you very much for the engraved plaque and the gift certificate. I purchased a beautiful Citizen Watch at Countryside Jewelry Store. It will be a watch that I can wear and have fond memories of teaching. Thanks again, Robin Davidson.
Good, thank you. Moving on to the action items, approval of parent educator resignation.
We have one this month. Erica Guzman, who was a part-time parent educator, has gotten full-time employment outside of the district, and so she needs to resign to move into that. Then I think there's a letter of resignation in your, in your packet from her.
I want the board to approve the resignation of Ms. Erica Guzman as a parent educator for the district, and thank her for her time and effort for the students and staff of the district.
Second.
Moon and second to approve parent educator resignation. Questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Dawn Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of parent educator letter of assignment. Approval of paraeducator letter of assignment.
We have a paraeducator who wanted to move to, from full-time to part-time because of issues that I know I can't discuss in the, in open session. And so to do so, we need someone to cover the other part of the day. Now, that means you'll have two pairs doing what one did before, but remember, when one goes to part-time, the benefits go away. So, I mean, it's, it's, the cost is not, probably equals right out by the two people. And so what we're asking you to do is to approve Christina Sis...
Shoshoka. Shoshoka.
Is it Shoshoka?
It's Shoshoka.
Thank you, thank you, because I miss, say it every time I say it, so.
I know them. Shoshoka.
I'll let you then make that motion.
I move the Board to approve a change in the letter of assignment to Ms. Tammy Lambert from full-time paraeducator to part-time paraeducator. I also approve a letter of assignment for Ms. Christina Shoshoka as part, as a part-time paraeducator. Second.
Moon and second to approve the paraeducator letter of assignment. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert DePirio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of contract with Voss and Associates.
Last month, you remember, you did a phone conference with David Voss on this, and all I did was put in your packet his slide from that presentation with costs. I, I truly think that we need to do something to help us with, you know, getting our website, getting our contact system, doing a better job with our communications, getting that stepped up and getting it moving forward. And I think it would be a real good deal for the, that to be done before the next person comes to this seat, so that's not something they have to worry about. So I would, I would recommend option one, so that they're just working with us. We're not counting hours, we're not counting minutes, we're just, let's get the job done.
I move the Board to approve a contract with Voss and Associates for Technology Consulting Services for the 2015-16 school year at a cost of $18,000.
Second.
Moon and second to approve the contract with Voss and Associates. Questions on that?
I do. What specifically are we going to give for our $18,000? Is, by the, when the end of the year is over, is our website going to be done?
Yeah.
It'll be all updated by then?
Yeah.
I mean, that in itself is probably worth that.
Yeah, that's, that's his first goal. Second goal is to get us a, a system where we can contact the parents at the drop of the, of the hat.
And the second one is the, is the emergence, that emergency system.
Right. Thirdly would be...
What's it called? It's got a name, too.
Well, they're...
I can't think of it.
It depends upon the, the company. There's one called Sky Alert, there's one called Parent Alert. So I think it's looking at what fits our system, and that's what they do, they study that. The third thing is, you know, he went through all that stuff in his, in his PowerPoint, but was setting up groups where the superintendent meets with people in the community to talk about what's going on. Again, also to do some newspaper, media releases, that's what they do. But I think you're right, if we had the first two things able to be done, it's worth every dime of, of what, what happens.
Who are we going to get to manage the website and some of this other stuff once?
I think the managing of it, he, they come in with a different philosophy. Not only does the IT person still do it, but they, they kind of have an organizational chart that says, here are some of the other duties, and here's who can do that, down to me or one of the administrators, or even the teacher from their own, you know, how can I put my own website on there and not have to go through six hoops to get it on the, on the website? So he has a huge organizational chart of that.
Any other questions?
So, so we have the list, because I remember the presentation and everything, and I think that there were some things that just didn't feel like totally concrete in what he was going to accomplish in that year for the $18,000. But within the contract that we have, there is a, there, there's a definite number of items that he will accomplish within this contract.
Yes.
Okay.
The website and the other one being the major two.
Right.
With the branding for the elementary school helping with that, helping with what Dawn just talked about, doing some in-service on, you know, how do I put something on the webpage and make it presentable and that type of thing.
That's all included.
But our webpage will look different.
Aye.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Whole new site.
Okay.
Okay.
Roll call, then.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert DePirio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of summer school dates?
You had in your, in your packets, two correspondents from Melissa Brown, who's in charge of, of summer school. The first one is the dates of summer school would be June 20th through July 22nd. And when, we're going to, this year, for the first time, we're going to make the Fourth of July weekend a four-day weekend. We haven't always done that, we've only taken the Fourth off. But we've also found that when it falls on Monday, there's, the attendance on Friday is not very good. So we're just going to say, you know, parents deserve to have a four-day weekend with their students. The other one is you have two swim sessions, one from June 29th to July 10th, and one from July 13th to July 24th. We talked about trying to move it into one session and maybe make it a little longer, but the logistics of it for this summer are just, we just couldn't put it together. So we're going to go with the two sessions, at least this, at least one more summer.
Questions?
Why would, just curious, why would?
Put it on the, put it on the table first.
Oh, sorry.
Get your motion on the table first. Sorry.
I move the Board to accept the following dates for summer school and swim lessons for the 2015-16 school year, specifically June 20th to July 22nd for summer school, July, June 29th through July 10th for the first swim session, July 13th through the 24th for the second swim session.
Second.
Rachel.
Um, what was the, I'm just curious about the swimming lessons? What's the, putting it on to one session?
Well, what we had, if we have some of the, not the main lifeguard, but some of the other people, the students, only wanted to work one or the other. And then we, when we, they asked to be back, we didn't inform them that it would be that much longer, and so in talking to a couple of them, I know we're going to lose them because they have other jobs or they do other things. So what we need to do is to get that out a year ahead of time so that kids know, hey, if you want to do swim lessons with us, here's the whole, whole time period. And that, that was probably the biggest thing, Rachel, it became a deterrent.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert DePirio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas. Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Forensics Accounting Competition Overnight Request.
Yes, and you've had this one in the past, but it's through the Business Department here at the high school. They're, they get involved in a forensics accounting competition. I think last year might have been the first year it was run, and we went, I don't know, I know we placed in it. But it's an overnight trip from a Sunday and return on Monday, so because it's an overnight trip, they have to have your permission to be able to go. They stay overnight in Kohler, and then the competition is at Lakeland College in Sheboygan.
Motion?
I move the Board to approve the forensic accounting competition overnight trip for March 6th and 7th, 2016, to Lakeland College in Sheboygan, Wisconsin. It is understood that the Board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Moon and second to approve the Forensics Accounting Competition Trip. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert DePirio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Co-Curricular Letter of Assignment.
You have one in your packet this month, Katie Burton. Katie is a teacher at the elementary school and would like to get, helping out with the basketball program. So she would like to coach the 7th grade girls' basketball this year.
Questions or motion?
I move the Board to approve a letter of assignment for Ms. Katie Burton as the 7th grade girls' basketball coach for the 2015-16 school year. Second.
Moon and second to approve the Co-Curricular Letter of Assignment. Any questions on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert DePirio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Gifts.
You have two this month, I think they wrote the write-ups were in your packet. First one was from Jeannie Jirdy for $400 to the Lake Mills Elementary School for the Arts Program. And the second one was Warren Krieger, who donated a truckload of lumber to the high school technology department for, I think it was for their small buildings, classes it goes, but that was estimated, its value was about $400.
Motion, please.
I move the Board to approve the following gifts, of $400 from Mrs. Jeannie Jirdy for the elementary school arts program, and a gift of $400 from Mr. Warren Krieger for a gift of lumber to the high school technology education department, and thank them for the generous donation.
Second.
Questions? Comments?
You know, I'm always, always impressed with the number of people who step up and make donations to this district.
Yes, yes.
It's truly remarkable and very, very generous of them.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert DePirio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas. And Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Uh, January Board Items.
I have, I know we will have a resignation of our assistant buildings and grounds. The WASB resolutions will be here. We usually go through them, I send them out when we get them. They go through them, and then they might give you some, marching orders is not the correct term, but, you know, some suggestions.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We have the two policies and the open enrollment numbers. Ms. Seabrood will bring to you the educational options, and then the summer school pay, and then the facilities long-range plans. Anything else?
Are we going to be hiring, or did we hire a middle school teacher for language arts?
We have not been able to hire one yet, we haven't found one.
Would that be January, too?
I hope so. We're working with a long-term sub right now. And if we can't find anybody, we're working with Whitewater on interns. But as of right now, there's, the, the people that Jennifer had the last time around and interviewed, no, it wasn't worth putting them in there.
We don't need it.
No, it was, it was a headache waiting to happen again. So it's, it's posted again.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, motion to jury.
So moved.
Second.